We will now reconvene the City Council's special meeting. Are there any final actions?
No further action tonight.
All right, we will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting and joint City Council Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, and the South of 50 Parking Authority meeting for Tuesday, December 12th. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalam Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
No updates tonight.
All right, we will now convene the joint meeting. And will the Clerk please call the next item?
Yeah, your first item under your joint meeting is your consent calendar, and you have one item on the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes, we will now adjourn the joint meeting and reconvene the regular City Council meeting. Will the Clerk please call the next item?
Well, you, one more on your joint meeting. You have your joint meeting public hearing, item number two.
Oh.
So that will be, it's okay, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, this will be the City of Folsom, CFD number 23, known as Folsom Ranch Improvement Area Number Two, Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2024. You have two sub items underneath this, Resolution Number 11147, which I won't read the whole title, and Resolution Number 011, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, CFO. Tonight I'm presenting the Community Facilities District Number 23 Improvement Area Two, Special Tax Revenue Bonds, Series 2024. And before we get started, I have to state that there's been an update to the not to exceed amount. The notice of public hearing published on November 30th of 2023 stated that the not to exceed amount was 11.5 million. That has been increased to 12.5 million. For background information on this item, the City Council approved CFD 23 Improvement Area Two on May 26th of 2020. In March of 2023, change proceedings were completed to amend the rate and method of apportionment for CFD 23 Improvement Area Two. This improvement area provides for the construction and acquisition of certain public improvements to serve property within that CFD. These improvements include backbone infrastructure such as transportation, water system, recycled water, drainage, wastewater, parks, parkways, and open space, and also provides for subdivision improvements such as underground utilities, subdivision roadways, street lighting, sound walls, and landscaping. Here's an image of the improvement area within CFD 23. It's the area outlined there in red, and that's right along White Rock Road. Staff is proposing to issue the Series 2024 Special Tax Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $12.5 million. The proceeds will be used to finance the acquisition and construction of certain public facilities, fund a debt service reserve account, fund capitalized interest, and pay certain cost of issuance. The recently appraised value of this property within CFD 23 Improvement Area Two is about $85 million. In compliance with the city's CFD policy, the value-to-lean ratio is at 7.2 to 1. The city's policy is that it be at least 3 to 1. And also in compliance with the city's policy is the projected tax burden per parcel, it will be at 1.84% for multifamily low-density units. By taking these actions tonight, you're approving the form of various required documents listed here on this slide. You're also authorizing the officers of the city and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority to execute any and all documents and also take appropriate actions to prepare to issue these bonds. And so with that, I do recommend approval of City Council Resolution Number 11147 and also the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Resolution Number 011, Folsom Ranch FA. Thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any questions from the council? No? Okay. We will now open the public hearing.
You have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, we will now close the public hearing.
I will move adoption of Resolution Number 11147.
Second.
All right, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes, we will now adjourn the joint meeting and reconvene.
Actually, I need to approve adoption of Resolution Number 011.
Second.
All right, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalam Chirla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. Now.
Now.
Now we will adjourn the joint meeting and reconvene the regular City Council meeting.
Will the Clerk please call the next item? Yeah, that'll take you to your first scheduled presentation item tonight. This is a resolution of commendation honoring Kikiman Foods on their 25th anniversary.
In Folsom.
25th anniversary in Folsom.
And accepting the resolution is Kyo Nagai, who's the Kikiman Vice President and Plant Manager. The City of Folsom, actually, I will hand this to you. The City of Folsom, Resolution of Commendation Honoring Kikiman Foods, Inc. on their 25th anniversary in Folsom. Whereas Kikiman Foods, a renowned purveyor of high-quality soy sauce and other fine foods, has reached a significant milestone celebrating its 25th anniversary in Folsom. Whereas Kikiman Foods in Folsom was the second United States plant established by Kikiman Corporation, whose international operations are headquartered in Noda, Jiba, Prefecture, Japan. Whereas Kikiman Foods has consistently demonstrated a commitment to excellence, innovation, and the highest standards in the food industry, contributing to the culinary landscape and enriching the community. Whereas over the past quarter century, Kikiman Foods has been a steadfast and valued member of the Folsom community, fostering positive relationships with residents, students, businesses, and local organizations. Whereas Kikiman Foods has played a pivotal role in promoting culinary diversity, sharing the rich flavors of its products, and enhancing the gastronomic experiences of countless individuals. Whereas the company's dedication to sustainability and responsibility and responsible business practices has set an exemplary standard in corporate citizenship, inspiring others to follow suit. Now therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor for the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the Folsom community, do hereby commend and congratulate Kikiman Foods on this 25th anniversary in Folsom, extending our sincere appreciation for the company's outstanding contributions to the community, the culinary world, and the global marketplace commended on this 12th day of December. So Kikiman Foods had a celebration a couple of weeks back, and there was one thing that I think every household has, and that's Kikiman Soy Sauce. So would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much. Yeah. I'm very happy to be here. Then also I have this documentation from the City of Folsom. We have a policy to join the local committee to collaborate and help each other, something like that. Then we are very happy to get here. Thanks so much.
Okay, your next scheduled presentation this evening is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming December 16, 2023, as Wreaths Across America Day. She closed it.
You got it?
It got closed.
Can you open it up there?
I can come down. Can you? Thanks, Stacy.
There is a personal photo that I wanted to share about today's proclamation, because not only is it personal, it is where my late husband is buried at Sacramento Valley National Cemetery. So the first Christmas that he, the year that he passed away, which was in 2021, I went there and I was just blown away at the beauty and the serenity of the Sacramento Valley National Cemetery. So I wanted to share that photo as we share this proclamation. So I'm going to give it to you ladies. So accepting the proclamation is Bobby Bennett, who is the Regent of the Charlotte Parkers' Chapter, and Cynthia Gibbs, who is the Wreaths Across America Chair. The proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming December 16th as Wreaths Across America Day. Whereas in 1992, Warchester Reeds Company owner, Morale Warchester, with the aid of Maine Senator Olympia Snow, arranged to donate, transport, and place Maine balsam fir wreaths on the graves of the fallen heroes at Arlington National Cemetery each December in honor of our fallen veterans. Whereas the tribute each holiday season to honor each branch of the military servicemen and women continued annually, and in 2005, national interest inspired and prompted the formation of Wreaths Across America Project. In 2006, with the help of the Civil Air Patrol and other civic organizations, simultaneous wreath-laying ceremonies were held at over 150 locations around the country. In 2007, the Warchester family, along with veterans and other groups and individuals who helped with the annual wreath ceremony at Arlington, formed Wreaths Across America, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization with the mission of remember our fallen veterans, honor those who serve, and teach our children the value of freedom. Whereas through the hard work and generosity of the people involved in the Wreaths Across America, hundreds of thousands of wreaths have been sent to cemeteries and veteran memorials annually for wreath-laying on the second or third Saturday in December. On December 13, 2008, the U.S. Congress unanimously voted this day as Wreaths Across America. Whereas the Wreaths Across America has chosen serve and succeed, and in 2003, its 2003 theme, to encourage youth involvement in communities to serve in even small ways that can make a big impact. Whereas Saturday, December 16th, has been designated by Wreaths Across America Organization as a day for this year's wreath-laying ceremonies to occur. Now therefore, I, Rosario Rodriguez, Mayor for the City of Folsom, do hereby proclaim December 16th as Wreaths Across America Day in the City of Folsom and encourage our citizens to serve and succeed in joining Wreaths Across America volunteers and other patriotic community and veteran organizations to participate in the Wreaths Across America Day ceremonies and then wreath-laying activities at the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Cemetery and the Mormon Island Relocation Cemetery proclaimed on this 12th day of December 2023. And so. Thank you. So the work that you all do is just really, you know, it's heartfelt for families that have loved ones buried in the veteran cemeteries and other cemeteries as well. Would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted to let you know that the Charlotte Parkers' Chapter, the Daughters of the American Revolution, is the location coordinator, but we could not do it without the supporting help of the Sacramento Chapter, the Sons of the American Revolution, the VFW Post 6604, the Boy Scout Troop 94, the Rolling Hills Blue Star Moms, the Marine Corps League, and Team Red, White, and Blue, and so many other community and individual organizations that helped sponsored all of the wreaths for placing on the veteran graves at the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Cemetery. It is open to the public, there is no cost, everybody is welcome. Nine o'clock will be the ceremony at the VFW Hall, 10:15 we will be laying wreaths. I just wanted to also let you know, I only got this morning, 2.9 million wreaths are going to be laid at 4,225 cemeteries across the nation this Saturday, December 16th. Wreaths Across America.
Do you, anybody else want to say anything?
No, we're good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for talking.
So this next one is a declaration of the Folsom City Council reaffirming its commitment to promoting an inclusive, safe environment for all. Whereas the City of Folsom unequivocally condemns violence against innocent citizens in both Israel and Palestine, and calls on the world's leaders to pursue means to urgently cease violence against civilians and ensure safe humanitarian conditions, not just temporarily but permanently. Whereas all human life is precious, and the targeting of innocent civilians, no matter their faith or race, is horrifying and unacceptable and must stop. Whereas according to a November 29 report from the United Nations Office of the Coordination of Human Affairs, over 1,200 human beings in Israel, and the source is Israel Prime Minister's Office, and over 14,000 human beings in Palestine from the Gaza Health Ministry have lost their lives since October 7th. The City of Folsom grieves and mourns alongside innocent civilian victims and their loved ones caught in the crossfire of violence in regions in conflict worldwide. The region is home to people from many different backgrounds, including those with familiar cultural and/or religious ties to countries and regions of conflict. The City of Folsom recognizes that people in our own Folsom community may be deeply affected by current events, even if they are taking place thousands of miles away. The City of Folsom recognizes that people in our own Folsom communities may feel and endure extreme anxiety and concern about their own personal safety and that of their friends and family members, particularly during these times of violence, instability, and uncertainty. The City of Folsom recognizes with high concern that there's a dramatic rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia nationwide, and some have expressed fear that a similar rise could happen in Folsom. The City of Folsom denounces hate crimes of any type and seeks to ensure that every resident feels acknowledged, seen, heard, protected, included, supported, and safe in our community. Now therefore, it be declared that the City Council of Folsom, from the City of Folsom, that the City of Folsom reaffirms its commitment to promoting an inclusive, safe environment where all people can live in harmony, respect, and understanding. Declare on this 12th day of December 2023.
So we'll call speakers in order. So our first will be Rehan Alvi, who will be followed by Ashraf Abdallah, who will be followed by Riaz Mohammed.
Good evening. Dear Mayor Rodriguez, Vice Mayor Chalam Chirla, City Manager Elaine Anderson, and esteemed members of the City Council, good evening. I want to start my statement tonight by first expressing my sincere gratitude to each one of you for listening to the concerns of this community. Only a month ago, many of us who gathered here were unfamiliar faces to one another. But today, we're embarking on hopefully the first of many steps towards building a stronger and enduring relationship between the Muslim community of Folsom and our City Council members. So tonight, I want to convey not only my appreciation, but also the appreciation of the people I represent for your responsiveness to our voices and for taking the necessary steps to address our concerns on this very important issue. And even tonight, I know that there are some in this room who may feel that this declaration falls short, that it doesn't fully address the grave situation taking place in Palestine. And for those who feel that way, I want you to know, I hear your voice and I respect your view. But at the same time, I would ask you, please, let's not allow the pursuit of perfection to hinder real progress, the real progress which we are all making here tonight, together as one community. Now, is this declaration flawless? Is it perfect? No, it isn't. But then again, few things in life are. What it is, however, is a significantly improved version which reflects the nuanced reality of the crisis and the staggering disparity between the number of innocent civilians killed in Gaza versus Israel. By listing the number of human beings killed on each side as of November 29th, when this declaration was written, over 14,000 in Gaza versus 1,200 in Israel, this declaration clearly shows that this is not Israel's war against Hamas, but that this is Israel's war against Palestinians, and that is very important to hear. And Councilmember Kozlowski, last month you expressed your disappointment for what was happening in the Middle East and acknowledged similar tragedies globally, and I agree with you that there is widespread human suffering worldwide. But what sets Gaza apart is that the bombs being dropped there are directly funded by each person in this room, making it even more important and relevant. But even more importantly, here in Folsom, this declaration serves as a unifying force within our community, and that's why this declaration is so essential. I don't see this council's acknowledgement of the plight of the Palestinian people as just some symbolic gesture. Instead, I see this declaration as something which signifies the commitment of every single person in this room to empathy, understanding, and justice. And also, I don't see the mayor's invitation to sit down with MCF's leadership to work on this declaration as something trivial. I see it as the inaugural step in a series of engagements with the council on topics which are important to the people of Folsom. So if nothing else, the last month has taught us that we all really care about Folsom and the people of Folsom. And tonight, I thank you again and say that we look forward to continuing working with you and improving the city and the lives of all of its residents. So again, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will be Ashraf Abdallah, followed by Riaz Mohammed, followed by Scott Rafferty.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council and City Manager, I want to echo on behalf of the MCF Muslim community of Folsom, our appreciation to this step of healing our community and healing our community. As Rehan mentioned earlier, our issue is not just of a Muslim issue. Our issue is with the justice in that. As I mentioned before, it's not just about one side or one group. It is again, the United Nation Human for Human Rights Council, since inception in 2006, declared almost half of the resolution against Israel, which is equating to the entire world. So for us as MCF, as Muslim, our justice and being funding, supporting just is very important, and we are looking forward this step in partnering with the City Council to not only support our community member in Folsom, but as well build on that partnership for many decades to come. So we appreciate you hearing our community and taking this step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will be Riaz Mohammed, followed by Scott Rafferty, followed by Deah Al Gleason.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for having me back on. Two weeks ago, I was here discussing the impact of racism in our community and highlighting the one-sided approach of mainstream journalism, city resolution, and official statement that affect the ground reality. I gather there is a new declaration today, and I, with updates in languages to address Palestinian plight, including number of civilian casualties, and your call for a ceasefire. I applaud you for your courage and for finally addressing atrocities for what it is, and I hope you will continue to do that. The least we can do as representative of the people is to educate ourselves before we take sides. Since we last met, the temporary ceasefire has ended, and I have seen footage of a three-year-old boy shaking in fear after their house was destroyed. I've also seen footage of a father hugging his deceased daughter, probably around seven or eight years old, before handing her over to be wrapped in a cover. I'm sure there are many more, and to be honest, I don't have the courage to even read about it, let alone watch. I know some of you and a few here in the audience might reason that those videos are lies, that there is a lot of misinformation out there, and you just don't want to trust a shaking baby, he might be just faking it. Keeping all the bias aside, I think there is one thing that we all can agree on, and that is only Israel can drop thousands of bombs, murder thousands of civilians, openly state they are conducting genocide, staff a population of 2.2 million, destroy 60% of all buildings, kill 20-plus thousand people, including women and children, and have the audacity to claim that they are the victims. And for anyone to say that criticism of its action is antisemitic is beyond any shame. In observing this situation, it is clear that there must be an origin, an original sin. Forcefully displacing and murdering Palestinians to establish a state on top of an existing state is the original sin. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Rafferty. He'll be followed by Deah Al Gleason.
Good evening.
It appears there's a resolution on the floor, and I'm discussing a different matter. I think it would be more appropriate to have this debate.
Isn't this business from the floor? No.
Can you clarify?
I'm sorry, you're right, your business from the floor.
Thank you, Scott. We'll call you up.
We'll call you up at that time. I apologize for that. Deah Al Gleason will be next.
Good evening.
My name is Deah Deen Asama Al Hussein. I've been a resident of Folsom since 1991, April to be specific. If you drive for about half an hour, almost an hour away from the City of Folsom, people ask you where you come from, and you say Folsom, most likely they wouldn't know. But I can assure you one thing, if you ask the people of Gaza, where is the City of Folsom, they definitely don't know. But in the future, when people look back at this genocide that is taking place in front of our eyes, at the killing of children, the killing of children in front of our eyes, they're going to look back in history and find out who are the courageous ones that stood with them, and those are the people that they will be recognized then, including your grandchildren. They will look back at this to find out what happened, who were the courageous ones. I am not here by any means to influence your opinion, but as a matter of fact, just to give you a piece of advice, nor to misguide you like others did by saying it is a Muslim-Jewish conflict. It is not a conflict, it is an occupation. John McCain once said, "If it walks like a duck, it quacks like a duck." It is a duck. It is an occupation by all its means, by all its brutal killing of innocent civilians. If you look into Islam and its fundamentals, you would find in the core of our belief that we as Muslims believe in the message of Moses. We believe in Moses himself, peace be upon him, just like we believe in the message of Jesus Christ, right? And his message, peace be upon him as well. So before, before, before you go tonight and slip in the comfort of your bed sheet, looking back at your day, looking back at the innocent pictures of those infants or of those babies that they happened, if they're lucky, they survived to find out, right, that they became orphans, to find out that they're homeless, to find out they have no electricity, no water, no food, don't turn your back on them, don't turn your human kindness on them, don't turn off your humanity on them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, will the Clerk please call the next item?
Okay, that takes us to business from the floor.
All right, business from the floor is the public's opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There is a speaker timer in front of the podium that will display the time you have left remaining of your three minutes. We ask that everyone please respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have an equal opportunity to address the City Council. Are there any requests to speak?
You do have requests to speak under business from the floor.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll call the speakers in order. So your first speaker will be Scott Rafferty. Sorry, Scott, for calling you the wrong spot, followed by the group of Dan Carson, and then followed by Hari.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's been almost three years. It's been almost three years since 330 of your constituents asked you to comply with the California Voting Rights Act, and your city manager refused to refer this petition to the council, requiring a process to begin, which should have completed the matter for $30,000 and a map reflecting the neighborhoods of the community. There have now been six attempts to dismiss this lawsuit that you made necessary, and all of them have failed. And ultimately, Member Aquino, you failed in your effort to, as you put it, blow a hole in the California Voting Rights Act. It's time to comply because there is now that the federal court has returned this to the state court. There will not be another election with an unapproved map. There will be a map that respects the communities of Folsom. There will be a map that guarantees equal representation to the Asian community, and the Asian community will have an opportunity to elect a candidate of choice in a presidential election year as mandated by the state law. This will happen. The question is, how much money will you spend fighting this? It's time to be candid about how much money you've paid this law firm from Orange County in the futile attempt to fight a law that no city has ever failed to comply with before. So I call upon you to do that and to enter into some negotiations to get this done with minimal further court intervention, because it's going to be a very costly period if you do not. And you heard from all, so many of your constituents, that the duly map is one good option, we could look at other options, but we can't have 27 different population swaps, grabs that were designed to protect incumbents, one of whom is known that didn't work for her. And Mayor Rodriguez, you're not using the district that was designed for you, you're off doing something else. Member Chalamchirla, you're not going to be able to run for reelection. So let's just do what's right for the city, and let's move forward and make all neighborhoods proud. This should work for everyone. And I just would like to end on a more graceful note that affirms the diversity of this community and gives everyone an equal voice.
10 seconds, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker will be the group of Dan Carson, Lorraine Pajoni, Carrie Lane, and Justin Rathel, followed by Hari, followed by Ramana Punimarti.
So just for my own clarification, are you guys one speaker?
Yeah, just one speaker.
One speaker, okay.
Yeah, I'll speak mainly, but Carrie's going to add in as well. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Elaine Anderson. My name is Dan Carson. I'm Folsom-born and raised for 30 years, now working for Folsom Fire Department. I'm here tonight on behalf of our committee, the Folsom Residents Supporting Public Safety and Quality of Life. Our committee is a robust and engaged group of Folsom citizens. Several of them are here with me tonight, Lorraine Pajoni, Carrie Lane, Justin Rathel, Bill Romanelli in the back as well. We're advocating for a one-cent sales tax that would specifically support the Folsom City Services most valued by our residents, those being public safety, police, firefighters, emergency medical services, parks, trails, and recreation, as well as safe and comfortable city roadways free of congestion. We're pleased to report to you that we've submitted our special one-cent sales tax measure to the city and received title and summary from the city attorney. A copy of the measure is currently available on the city's website. Our next step is to begin gathering signatures for our measure in order to qualify for the November 2024 election. I'll have Carrie speak a little bit more on this.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. We are holding our campaign kickoff and petition signing event next Wednesday, December 20th, at Red Bus Brewing from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Residents, as well as members of the city council, are invited to attend that event. We'll have opportunities to sign the petition and ways to learn more about how you can support the efforts of our work. Thank you.
I look forward to personally seeing all of you at the event on the 20th as well. In addition, the community will begin seeing us collect signatures starting next week all the way through April of 2024. We thought you also might like to know, we have concluded our polling, and the results confirmed what everyone in our effort already know. That is, the Folsom residents strongly support a sales tax to enhance public safety, parks, trails, and recreation opportunities, as well ensuring our roadways are safe. A special one-cent sales tax would specifically support all those and stay in Folsom. Residents, as well as all of you, can learn about our information at FolsomTakesAction.org. We look forward to working with you to enhance the services that Folsom residents value highly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will be Hari, who will be followed by Ramana Punimarti, who will be followed by Dr. Paul Manikam.
Good evening.
Good evening, Folsom residents and the city council members. My name is Hari. I've been living in Folsom for the past 16 years. I love the city. The city is diverse, inclusive, and friendly. More than anything, it is safe, or that is what I thought until I, what I saw happening in the Lakeview Oaks and Empire Ranch neighborhood. On the night of Diwali, an auspicious festival for Indian Americans, there was what looked like planned vandalism in our neighborhood by a small group of people. It has been five-plus weeks, and we still don't have any updates from the Folsom Police Department, even after making a complaint. We request some action to be taken for the safety of our family members and little children, who are the light and hope of our world. We really appreciate the holiday Santa drive that our Folsom Police Department does for our kids, and they really enjoy. We need them to have pleasant and happy memories like these. We want to teach our kids only the best and not tell them that they could be attacked by someone or could be hurt or be mindful of their presence and location at all times. This kind of vandalism and arson incidents definitely spoil our peace of mind and the harmony of the community. We kindly request the mayor of Folsom and the Folsom City Council members, in conjunction with our friendly Folsom Police Department, to help get a closure in this regard. We have even raised our voices and concern with our HOA board, but we don't see the light at the end of the tunnel yet. We are ready to present the digital evidence and all sorts of details if added in the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you for listening to our concerns this evening. Have a great holiday season. Thank you.
I just want to make sure you know there is a neighborhood meeting on Thursday at 5:00 p.m. that I'll be at, and also Lieutenant from the Police Department.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Ramana Punimarti, followed by Dr. Paul Manikam, followed by Satish Chalingi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ramana Punimarti. I used to live in Folsom for a number of years, but I'm currently living in Elrod Hills, but I'm building a home in Folsom. I hope to, I look forward to living in Folsom again. And I'm here because I'm one of the three victims, three different victims. Hari spoke about it, is, I'm here to talk about the same thing. Let me speak to... So I'm here today as one of the three different victims of vandalism with major property damage. Unfortunately, I'm not able to share the video today, but next time we will do that. It took place on Townsend Court Street in Lakeview Oaks on November 12th, the day of Diwali, of Hindu festival, exactly a month ago. And it happened at 12, 6:30 p.m. We have a video from neighbors, unfortunately, we couldn't show today, that the camera that captured it well as the perpetrators screaming racial slurs. It shows it was a hate crime against people of color. All three are Indian-American origin on the day of the festival. Again, as I said, it was a brazen attack. It happened at 6:30 p.m. Another house nearby was set on fire a few days ago, a few days later. Fortunately, it was caught at the nick of time. We approached the Folsom Police, and we were told that they are shorthanded on resources. If safety and security is not a priority, what is it? I really find it baffling. What is the city council for? If we as residents don't feel secure, you know, what answer do you give to the people? We are concerned for our safety and security as the culprits are still on the loose. Again, as I said, it has been more than a month, and we are all living in fear. What measures will the city will take or should take to restore the faith of the city of Folsom as a safety place, as a safe place? We urge you to look into this matter and not brush it off as one-off incidents, as vandalism going unchecked may lead to more vandalism, which is unconscionable. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will be Dr. Paul Manikam, who will then be followed by Satish Chalingi. Good evening.
Good evening, all. This is Dr. Paul Manikam. I work at Mercy Folsom Hospital. I moved to Folsom in 2019. We built a house in Empire Ranch, Lakeview Community. I'm just supporting some evidence to what they have discussed before. In 2019, when we were building, there was a break-in at the backyard, I'm sorry, frontyard. We reached out to HOA, they said that, you know, we were the only house, so you need to put a fence in. So we put a fence in the front yard, they broke in the backyard the year after. So we reached to the HOA again, they said it's a one-off thing, it usually doesn't happen in Folsom, Folsom is safe and secure. So I said, okay, probably it's only one-off thing, because I'm the only person on that street, so maybe it's a high school kid or something like that. Then, fast forward, the same incident that what these people are discussing. I was in the emergency room, I handled a heart attack patient, I came back to the, my house, I was taking a shower, and all of a sudden, my power went off. I thought it was an electric problem. I came out, I saw some big banging sound at the neighborhood house. I treated a heart attack in my patient, I had a heart attack as well. So I was like, what is going on? I'm looking at the backyard, and on the security camera, I could see, you know, people running away with a car. So we reached out to the HOA meeting again, I presented this evidence again. HOA, they also have a issue that, you know, if we have to put security guards, we need to pay some money, and our Lakeview community members are discussing about this. But main concept, I really wanted to make my presence over here amidst my busy call schedule was, I think the situation is changing a little bit. It, Folsom was safe and secure, and that's why we moved in here. But I think these are all small, small incidents that is happening. I wanted to bring that attention to the city council, to see that, you know, maybe nothing major has happened yet, but maybe this might be the burning fire that we might have to put out right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, your final speaker tonight under business from the floor is set...
Oh, yeah, one more. One more speaker. Oh, sorry, 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 yes. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Satish Chalingi. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thanks for giving the opportunity. I was here two weeks back. I'm here to echo the same message. I just want to bring it to your notice one more time. Again, we are from Lakeview Oaks Community in Empire Ranch, you guys know it. We are here two weeks back and shared the hate crime incidents that happened in the community. Just to reiterate one more time, I know it's the same story, but hope it makes sense. We had three vandalisms on the Diwali weekend, the same day, on November 12th, and one arson on a separate day in a span of three weeks. So in addition, what's really concerning, apart from the vandalism, of course, there's a huge damage, and we don't like it. But what the perpetrators yelled, you know, and we really, really are looking forward to, you know, next time, present that to you guys, obviously screen it and give it to you guys, so you can look at it. The profane language and the racial slurs that included threats to lives, literally the language was so not correct towards the Indian-American community. And we strongly feel that it's a planned, thought-out events, and so we're concerned about the safety of kids and families. And we are here to make the case in person one more time, how the community is shaken up with fear for safety. And we ask city council to make sure that all adequate steps are taken as soon as possible to apprehend these people and take measures that will ensure the safety of the residents. We are aware that the Folsom PD is investigating the cases, we appreciate it that much. But so far, we have not seen or heard any new updates, so we are looking forward for those. We are also aware of the Neighborhood Watch meetings, and we are going to be there at Lakeview Oaks. We are coming to you for your continued support, to provide adequate resources to find these guys, and send a unified message that we will not tolerate hate crimes in the city. So we want the Folsom City to be a place where we can feel safe. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I know we can't engage, but I do think it's very important that we reiterate that the Police Department is investigating this. They are aware, they're taking it very seriously, they have assigned a detective, they are following leads. And unfortunately, these things take time, because they have to be done very thoroughly and very methodically. So we thank you for your patience, and I look forward to seeing all of you on Thursday night at 5:00.
Thanks, Councilmember Aquino. All right, well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Okay, that takes you to your consent calendar this evening.
Can we pull item number 12, please, for discussion?
I'd like to pull item number nine.
If there's nothing else, I can move items 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, 14, and 15.
I second.
Okay, well, the clerk, please call.
Councilmembers Chalamchirla?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, and item number nine is Resolution Number 11136. This is a resolution accepting the AB 1600 Development Fees Annual Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023.
So I, first, I want to know, so I just have some questions on this. Where are these development fees coming from? Are they south of 50, or are they development fees in general throughout all of Folsom?
It's all of the impact fees, so north of 50, south of 50, any impact fee we collect.
Okay, and it is an impact fee, it's segregated from the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, so I have some more questions. So on page...
Are you looking at the staff report or the...
I am looking, I'll get there in a second. It's the, the staff report in the packet that is, sorry, now I wish it was on paper, in the development impact fee report part of it.
What page is that, Councilmember Rorba?
Page 538 in the entire packet. Item number nine, and then on page... Her packet's over 600 pages, so hold on. On page 14 of that one. So in that paragraph, it says clearly what it's stated for, right? And it says, the need for, this is for the need for facilities and/or services created by the new residential and commercial development. So what I see in here under both capital, police capital, fire, and also the general capital, it looks to me that the revenues brought in by development fees in 2018, 19, are you following me? I just want to make sure.
I got there.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure you were. 307,000, give or take a little bit. They stayed around almost 400,000 in the next year. Obviously, COVID year, they dropped down, and now they're rebounding up. So this last year, they had 195,000 that was designated for police capital, which includes services. The available fund balance down below, minus expenses and carryover, is $1.3 million. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then I saw a note on the next page saying that 830 of that was designated towards the supposed police capital fund to be utilized towards a new remodel project, which I believe that has been scrapped. And then you go down to page, I think it's 18. Page 18, in the paragraph, again, it says, "The city council determined that the existing police, fire, and general government services and facilities would be inadequate to accommodate the needs generated by projected new residential, industrial, and commercial growth in the city and additional services and facilities." So additional services, again, were needed to protect and promote the health, safety, welfare of Folsom residents and businesses." Pretty much goes in alignment with what these three gentlemen right before me said. So in that general capital, which can be used for all the whole remedy of things, the revenues this last year were $450,000. In 18, 19, 19, 20, it was over 700,000. Obviously, there's a drop in 2020, it rebounded halfway in '21 to '22 fiscal year, and now it's up to 450. And that available fund balance is $1.7 million. So in light of all the discussions we've had, especially October 10th, when, and actually since I got on this council, advocating for more resources for our Police Department, it seems to me that we're getting to an emergency situation, that something needs to change with the growth. This is obviously not for you, this is for our city manager. Why can't we get creative? This isn't even creative, it says it specifically that this is outlined. Now, it looks like to me, the, this has already been spent. Is that correct?
Let me give you a little bit of background just on the impact fees. So they are designated for facilities to provide services.
Okay. But when you have facilities, you need the people to fund those facilities.
You do, yes. But the money that you're speaking of here, these fund balances are for facilities, to build facilities. So for general... for facilities, to build facilities. So for general capital, I'm not sure if that's what you were asking, but, so for the police capitals to build...
Well, I think we need, I guess what I'm frustrated with, not with you, that we seem to always say we don't have money. We talk about all the doom and gloom 15, 20 years ago, but we're not creative at all in doing what we need to do for our police department, our fire, our entire staff. This is one place I see that I think that we could make a case that we need more services, which is capital in the city for our police department. They are severely underfunded right now. And if we, as I stated last, two weeks ago, we, in eight years, is the first time that we have got to 25% in our, in our budget for our police department. That's about 800 to a million dollars of money that we did not give the police department this year, that would have helped all of these things that people have talked about today and talked about for the last entire year. So in light of this information, it's, to me, let's get creative on how to fund this. Let's stop using excuses, and we will find a way. I would like you to come next time prepared with the, the increased revenue we had, four and a half more million dollars than projected, which is, which is fine. But how much of that property tax was from south of 50? Because that is the one, south of 50, that is, when they get calls, DMX, violent calls, whatever, is pulling from the resources in north of 50, which we promised years ago, when I wasn't here, that we would not do. We would not sacrifice the service of south, uh, north of 50 for south of 50. Well, except our property value taxes are going up so much in south of 50 that not, we're not doing right by them either. And so, because they have no regular patrols south of 50, period. Now, of course, our police department responds when needed. They will give, they will send services there when needed. But if I lived there, I would be super frustrated. So in light of this, you know, we're, it's a consent agenda. It's a document. But I don't know why we can't stop using excuses and start to get creative of where we can get money to fund our police department. I hear all the time from this entire council and from the city manager that that is your number one priority. So let's just make it a number one priority.
If I want, can I get clarification? I remember from our budget on July 3, July 1, 2023, three FTEs were assigned to the south of 50. Can I get confirmation that that is accurate? Maybe call Chief Hellmann down?
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, while the chief is on his way, I just want to clarify what AB 1600 development impact fees are. Those are very restricted fees that can only be used for what the next study said it can be used for, for, and, and in that capacity. They are not to be generated as taxes or assessments that the council otherwise could do citywide. They can only have some kind of linkage to a particular development, and those fees are to, hopefully supposedly offset the impacts caused by those new developments. So they are not ongoing indefinitely. They can go up and down depending on development status and, and, and progress. But as Stacy indicated, those are really just for infrastructure. The language you're reading is not wrong, Madam Councilmember Rorba. That's candidly what the next study typically say. But impact fees are typically just for infrastructures, not necessarily personnel services.
Right. And I, I'll just interrupt real quick, and then I'll be done completely.
Yes, ma'am.
But that, you know, that would, that would mean a police substation, an inability for them to go down. They're already over exceeding their capacity. They're also expanding and across the street, but we need to focus on.
And for south of 50, that's in the PFFP. Stacy can explain it much better than I can. That's been designed right.
Public Facilities Financing Plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Chief Hellmann. So I just want to clarify the information that was just stated, that there is, that insinuating that maybe we, there's no coverage on the south of 50. But I remember from our budget conversations, July 3, three FTEs, police officers were assigned to the south of 50.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're killing your police chief. We have, we want to have that staffing. We have people in the academy that will be graduating. We have some vacancies now, and we have others in, that will be starting the academy soon. We currently have people on overtime to staff south of Highway 50. So we offer overtime to the officers. We don't mandate it because honestly, like others, there's so much overtime, and then after that, people get burned out. And we don't want to do that. So we offer overtime, and officers can sign up on a voluntary basis to patrol south of Highway 50.
But, so just to clarify, but they're, they're working right now in overtime to cover those positions. But you do have three FTEs, or I, I know...
Positions.
Positions.
That are vacant.
Assigned to the south of 50, from our budget, our current budget?
Yes, they're vacant, though.
Okay, that's fine. They're vacant. But we do have three positions that are assigned to the south of 50.
No, they're, I'm sorry. They're assigned to the police department. And then we decide as a police administration where the best need is to meet the community's requirements for public safety response.
Okay. And just for, for the sake of the public, how many officers do you have right now in training or through the academy?
We have two officers that are in the academy, that will graduate on the 21st and then go through six months of training. We have two officers beginning the academy this coming Friday. We have four vacancies. We have two people in training right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Are, are officers signing up for those overtime positions? Or are you having difficulty filling those?
It's hit and miss. They, some get filled and some don't. Maybe 50/50, 60/40, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion for item number nine?
I can move adoption of resolution 11136.
I second.
All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, the other item pulled for discussion was item number 12. This is resolution number 11143. This is a resolution rejecting all proposals for maintenance of parks, trails, and pet stations and public works areas.
I think my questions are less pointed, but I thought it would be worthwhile to have a synopsis of the staff report for the public's consumption.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, I'm Kelly Gonzalez, your Parks and Recreation Director. So recently, for the last four months, we have put together an RFP for landscape services, for our parks, trails, and public work areas. That RFP, we did a scoring process, and the top score, the actual budget was over our threshold. Our budget annually is approximately $900,000 annually. And the bid came back closer to $1.5 million. So at this point, the recommendation was to go ahead and reject bids. I worked with legal, and the recommendation was to do a base bid with a reduction of service levels with bid alternates. So depending on how much funding we have available, we will then see what service level we are able to fund. I hope that makes sense.
That, that does. Thank you. So, so my general question, this may actually be for the city manager because you're newer here. I feel like this is an instant replay of what has happened the last couple of years with, with the, particularly the park maintenance contract. Are we running up against just tremendous inflation? Are we running up against a kind of lack of available contractors? Is the maintenance that we're asking for more than what it's been in the past? I guess those are the three opening ideas.
Okay, so, thank you. First question, yes, we're absolutely running up against hugely rising costs in terms of these types of contracts, and that's mostly due to the cost of labor going way up. In terms of availability of contractors, that's tough as well, and we have dealt with that in other areas of the city as well. There's a lot of work to be had out there. So it's hard to get quality contractors to bid, and certainly hard to fit into the city's limited finances.
Sure. What was the number of bidders that we had in this instance?
Three.
Three, okay.
Yeah. And so, and then your final question, I don't think we're unreasonable in terms of what we expect.
It wasn't that. It was, the question was, because this has happened a series of times, I'm wondering if we are asking for the same scope of work successively, or if we have already backed off on what we asked for three years ago in order to get the contract two years ago, and then backed off last year in order to get the contract last year, and now we're asking for something that's equivalent to that and going to have to further reduce the actual work that will get done?
We keep, to be honest, kind of dialing back because it's just getting tougher and tougher for us. And this is just, I call it a pain point, and it is. I mean, this is what Ms. Gonzalez is presenting tonight. We're seeing in many areas, but this is, this is one that's going to be very visible to our community, is that we, you know, we're in a situation where we're far short of our budgeted amount for something that, you know, should be fairly easy to take care of, which is your parks and trails and public space maintenance areas. So, so we're going to have to, we're, we, we need you to reject these bids, and we need to start over, and we're going to need to lower service levels. And it's going to be a process of trying to figure out what that looks like. So it's, you know, that's, that's what we're moving through and trying to do it as gracefully as possible. But it is tough, and it's tougher every year.
So to follow up on, on those questions, I'm, I think the last time we did this, I remember there was one bid that, that came in quite a bit lower. When I asked about it, it turned out that that company did not have the bandwidth to do, you know, the entire city. They didn't have the personnel. They didn't have the trucks, all that kind of stuff. And because we are having difficulty finding enough contractors to bid, does the whole city have to be done as one? I mean, can we, can we divide it up so that there are, so that a smaller company, maybe they're just responsible for north of 50. Somebody else is responsible for, you know, I mean, is there a way to divide it up, or does it have to be one piece?
That's, we've given that thought. We, not only in terms of locations, but in terms of tasks, like, you know, maybe we should have just one company that focuses on one specific type of duty. Maybe we should have one company that focuses on one area. We've had those conversations. Unfortunately, it, all of that takes more coordination on staff's part. When you do that, when you start adding more contractors, we already struggle to keep up with the kind of staying on top of our contractor and, to make sure that the work gets done out there. And to add more contractors, the equation just means you need more staff to stay on top of it to make sure we're getting what we're paying for. Is that, the challenges, Ms. Gonzalez?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
And also, when you're providing more acreage, then your costs can go down. So if you're doing less for each of the vendors, then that cost will go up.
Okay. We've tried to be as creative as possible, as Councilmember Rorba mentioned earlier, but this is just a situation where the dollars fall short, and our, our community expectations are understandably high.
You're being asked to unmute yourself. To unmute, press star six.
The city council gets to review the agenda in great detail before these meetings. This is an item that normally would just pass through consent because the act of rejecting the bids is perfunctory. The reason I wanted to pull it specifically is because it is a perfect example of the continuing death by a thousand cuts that we are suffering in terms of rising costs chipping it away, potentially chipping away at the, the quality of our parks in this instance, but our quality of life generally in Folsom. So I would hope that you find a good creative solution to this, but there's no way around the fact that additional revenue or less services are the two big levers to pull in this instance. And I hope you all join me at Red Bus on the 20th.
I have a quick question before. What was the, what was the contract for? How much was the contract for last year? What was our budget? $900,000. And we did get one-time ARPA funding, which is not sustainable for this fiscal year. Okay, thank you.
Kozlowski, the only thing, though, I can, since we are talking about the vendors here, how we are reaching out to the vendor pool, I know, I have been, you know, putting my efforts on that one, emphasizing here, yes, we can list on our C-list or the vendor portal. It's, it's a, you know, I'm, I'm a small vendor for state. We have over 2,000 vendors there. Are we proactively reaching to the cities, not just these three, TerraCare, we know them, they are already providing services, BrightView, they're already providing services. LA, probably they might have done it in the past. So they are the only three people. But how about Consumeus River, wherever you came from, or our Ranch Cordova, you know, Recreation and Park. So we do have at least a dozen cities in our neighborhoods. Who is the BrightView is the only guy everybody is picking or not? So that helps us, that we have gone extra mile to hunt for the vendor community, to create some sort of competition here.
I agree. And I've heard you many times talking about how important that outreach is, and that's something we've definitely done and will continue to do. And I've been talking to my peers throughout different cities to see, they're struggling with the same thing with increased costs. But again, with the city of Folsom, we do have budget limitations. So it, it is a little bit harder sometimes to get the number of vendors bidding on our services.
Yeah. In, in this summary, I think that's what, you know, Kozlowski is talking about. In this summary, if I can get that, I won't be even repeating these questions. Right now, I don't know. That list is being, this RFO is being only seen by the Folsom served vendors, not outside people. So we got to go extra mile. At least a personal phone calls helps. You don't have to do, I know you're director for the department. There may be an administrative assistant, you know, making a calls to those. We encourage you to submit your RFO response to this.
Yes.
We go, you know, broadcast. It's not that we are favoring anybody. I know, city attorney is going to say that. We are not going to favor anybody, but we are going to reach out to people.
Yes, I agree.
That's what I want to see. If I see here 10 vendors, and still we are about half a million down, I'm okay with that. But right now, I'm not seeing that.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of resolution 11143, AKA item 12.
I second that.
All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes. All right. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Yeah, your next item this evening is public hearing, item number 16. As noted on the agenda, staff and the applicant is requesting that this item be continued to January 9, but we would like a motion from the city council to formalize the continuance of that item to January 9.
I so moved.
Second.
All right. Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
No.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes. All right. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is new business, item number 17. This is a presentation on the city's general fund unassigned fund balance, also known as the reserves, the policy and direction to staff.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, CFO. Tonight's presentation came at the request of the city council. And the focus tonight is to review one of your financial policies, the fund balance reserve policy, otherwise known as the emergency reserve. The current policy requires that a minimum of 15% of general fund expenditures be held in reserve. And then we'll also be looking at the second part of the policy and asking for confirmation from the city council that you'd like to continue the policy of transferring any excess fund balance, if there is any, at the end of a fiscal year, to the capital projects fund to be used for one-time capital expenditures. So first, we'll start with the background of why a reserve policy is established in the first place. The policy we have right now was initially established to ensure that the city's finances are managed in a manner that continues to provide for the delivery of quality services. It minimizes or eliminates the need to cut services because of temporary revenue shortfall such as a recession. And it also establishes the reserves necessary to meet known or unknown future obligations and provides for the ability to respond to unexpected events. Other reasons to have a reserve policy and to maintain a reserve include financial stability. And that was called out in the strategic plan. The paragraph there on financial stability states that planning for the long term and making decisions in the short term to ensure the necessary resources are available to deliver city services and achieve goals established by the council. Public entities intentionally accumulate and then maintain reserves to help ensure that financial stability and to continue to provide essential services in difficult times. Reserves also protect the city against unexpected interruptions in revenues. We can be vulnerable to federal or state actions. There can be adverse economic conditions, unpredictable one-time costs, and also exposure to natural disasters and emergencies. This is your current policy, and this was included in the packet. I'm not going to read all of it here. But the current policy for the general fund reserves is to main in...
is to main, to maintain an undesignated fund balance or reserve in the general fund of no less than 15% of your annual operating expenditures. It states that the undesignated fund balance will be used to provide for temporary financing for unanticipated extraordinary needs of an emergency nature. So it was written very specifically there. It also states that prior to allocating any funds, and this is down towards the bottom, allocating any funds from the undesignated fund balance, the city council shall find that an emergency or an extraordinary need exists to justify the use of the funds. And then the last part there is that funds shall be allocated each year in the budget process to replace anything that's used in the year before. So if, if you have to use the fund balance in the budget process, you have to have a plan to replenish it back to the, at least the minimum amount. And just a note here on the terminology, when this policy was written, "undesignated fund balance" was the accounting term that was used. It's now "unassigned fund balance," so you'll see me referring to "unassigned" for the rest of the time. So section B of the policy that we're reviewing tonight goes in to talk about the specific reserves for enterprise funds. And then the last part there, section C, states that "to the extent that funds accumulate in excess of 15% of annual operating expenditures," because that's what we have right now, "those funds shall be transferred to the capital projects fund." And that transfer hasn't happened in recent years. So we do have funds over 15% in the general fund right now. That's mostly because the general fund used the risk management fund to get through the impacts of the pandemic. And staff did recommend that those reserves go back to the risk management fund, but that was decided not to be done at that point. So those could, those sit in the general fund right now. However, this capital projects fund does exist, and this policy to transfer excess funds at the end of the year is something that we'd like you to just reaffirm when we get to the end of this presentation, that you'd like to continue with that. So we've seen this chart many times. This is just showing that we have 15% of annual operating expenditures as our minimum, but we don't have a maximum. And this is a, a history of the, the reserve in the general fund. So we have a target number of 15%. But this chart shows that back in fiscal year 2005, '06, we had reserves at a level of about 26.6%. And in the 10 years before that, the average was 23% of operating expenditures being held in reserves. So all the 10 years before the Great Recession, it was at 23%. Having this high level of reserves, as I've mentioned before, helped us to get through that Great Recession. We still had to do service cuts, we still had layoffs, and we got down to $3.99 million in fiscal year 11, or 5.98% of expenditures at that point. The current policy states, as we just saw, that if you use the reserve for an emergency need, then funds have to be allocated in the next years to rebuild that reserve. So that's what the city had been doing from fiscal year 11 up to about fiscal year 17, when we reached about 20% of expenditures at that point. And so although we do have that minimum of 15%, as I said, there's no specified maximum. So it's been sitting at an average of 20% for the past eight years. When you, when you look at the ups and downs with the red, the average is 20%. And that's where we sit right now. We did have the fluctuation during COVID, but we were able to keep that consistent, as I mentioned, because of the use of the risk management fund during that time. So that's just a summary of your current reserve and then the current level of your reserve. So now we'll move on to talking about some possible changes to the policy. So our Government Finance Officers Association produces all the best practices for local government. It's called the GFOA. And you've seen this before, that they recommend that at a very minimum, unassigned fund balance in the general fund will be no less than two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. So that's equivalent to about 17% of annual operating expenditures. So our current 15% is below the very minimum that they would recommend. They also mentioned that a particular situation for a government may require levels of unassigned fund balance that are significantly higher than the minimum level. And also, I think most would agree with the last point here, that cities with higher reserve levels are better positioned to protect public services during economic downturns or other unforeseen events. In preparing for this item, not only did we review those, those basic recommendations, but we reviewed over 20 different reserve policies from other city organizations. And we also studied the GFOA's recent publication titled "Rethinking Reserves." They just put it out, so it's very timely for this presentation. And it's all about helping cities to determine an appropriate level of reserves in their general fund. That publication, they had a few important notes that I wanted to point out. They found that a policy that identifies a, a floor and a ceiling rather than just a target like we have, so that you have a, a range, may be more useful to the city than just having a single target number. The reason for that is because we rarely have the target. We rarely have exactly 15%, so you're either over or you're under almost all of the time. And so this, having a range just defines the acceptable tolerances that the council's willing to be within. And then we have the, kind of the flexibility to stay within that range. Additionally, they state that a reserve range better supports ongoing management of reserves. It's kind of a similar point, but year to year, the reserve will fluctuate as our expenditures fluctuate year to year. So when we finish a fiscal year, I'm coming to you right with the next, the next quarterly report saying, well, now your expenditures are at 110 million, so your reserve has already dropped. Even though the dollar amount hasn't changed, the percentage has changed. So if you have a range, it just is easier to stay within the range. And then it also gives city staff a clear course of action. If you fall below the range, we know we need to do something about it. If we're above the range, then there's options on what to do. And then they also indicate that a, a range that has a floor communicates to the community that there's a minimum amount necessary to be a good steward of the funds and to manage the city's risks. But also a ceiling communicates that there is an upper limit of where these reserves are, it's valuable to keep them as reserves. And then there's a point when maybe they should be used for something else and not be held in reserve anymore, when you've reached that ceiling. To assist in determining appropriate range, we can look to our neighbors for comparison. And I've presented this chart before. Folsom's policy of a minimum of 15% is there at the bottom. We have our neighbors, West Sacramento and Rancho Cordova, have a mi, a minimum policy of 20%. Roseville at 25, and Elk Grove at 30%. But then this chart here shows what they actually have as reserves. And so everybody, including us, have other reserve funds that are unrestricted funds that are being held for a specific purpose, either to manage a, a specific risk or to plan for an anticipated future expenditures. So when we last surveyed Rancho Cordova with their general fund reserve and their other reserve funds, West Sacramento and Elk Grove were all at the 80 to 88% total reserves in comparison to their annual general fund expenditures. Roseville was at 54%, and then the city of Folsom was the lowest at 29%.
I have a question about those numbers. We passed the budget at 108, 108.5 approximately million dollars for expenses. The last time we saw a budget or a, a financial report, all of a sudden, the budget changed to 109 something. And now I see up here you have 110. So that's one question. I also have at the end of the 23, 24 budget that we passed, the projected return for, the, the projected general fund reserve was actually 25.8 million dollars. So I'm wondering where this 20, and, and from the financial report this last time, our income was going, our revenue was going up. So what happened to the other 2 million in the general fund reserve?
I'm not sure about the general fund reserve. This chart was just at the last time that we had done it. I did try to update the last column. I believe that the 110 was just what we're estimating expenditures to be in the fiscal year, not the adjusted budget. But I can check on that for you if there happens to be a typo.
Are these actual numbers? Because the, because the num, that's 2 million dollars different than the budget that you, you, you estimated we would end at in 23, 24 bud, or, I'm sorry, 22, 23 budget. And it was 25.8 million. Is that number wrong, or?
I have to look. I don't have that in front of me. I think the, the 110 is kind of a continuation of the conversation we had last year was. I, I mean, last meeting was that that was just what we expect expenditures to be. If I have a, a something wrong on the general fund reserve, I'll, I'll go ahead and check on that.
So which number, though? I mean, I, I mean, I, I look, I go back and look at the budgets and see if, you know, what changed because obviously the project, the estim, projected estimated and actual, the actual end up changing once you get your data, which I believe you have. I looked again, it's still at 25.8 million dollars that we ended last year. Our fiscal year ending June 30th, whatever.
On this chart here, we have the actuals for fiscal year 23. The bar chart is at about 23 million. So I, I believe I'm correct, 23, 23 million.
So how come our reserve went down by 2 million in three or four months?
So we have 23 for fiscal year 23 here on this chart, 23 million, and.
And in our project, in our estimated?
We have 23 million here.
No, in the budget that we passed, it says 22, 23 budget ends at 25.8 million dollars reserve fund.
I have to see the document you're, you're.
It's the budget on the, it's the budget on the city.
Yeah, I think I asked this question of you during the budget process. If I remember correctly, there's something else in the unassigned fund balance that is, that is restricted. And so if you add those two together, that's probably where you get that.
You're speaking of total, total fund balance, probably.
Or the general fund reserve only.
Okay, so there's, there's two different parts to that. We have a total fund balance, where you're going to have restricted funds in there. And we're speaking just of the unassigned fund balance. And that's what I report on, is the unassigned fund balance. So you have restricted funds in the general fund. Some of those are for encumbrances, which means purchases that the council has already approved that weren't spent by the end of the fiscal year. So those get taken out of unassigned because they're restricted for something else. You also could have insurance deposits that are not spendable. You have, so there's a few categories.
Insurance would be under risk management, is that correct?
You have some in the general fund, small amounts. But you also might have prepaid, if you, we had one for a fire apparatus that was prepaid. So that money has not left the general fund yet, but it is assigned to something. So it's not unassigned. So whenever I'm reporting on unassigned fund balance, it's not the total fund balance in the general fund, it's not total cash sitting there. It's what's available, you know, after those things get taken out. And that's part of the accounting standards of how we do it. We have committed, unassigned, all of those categories in there. So this is your unassigned.
Well, I would like to see that, if you could send that to me at a, a later date.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, I think we were here.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Stacy, this is bothering me for the last 10 minutes. What is that other revenue funds in approximately? We know what we have, 8 millions, a risk, right?
Similar things.
But those are 50 million dollars.
Capital projects funds that they're saving for large infrastructure projects. They may also have risk management funds. They have, some, some of them have economic development funds. Some of them have funds over their saving to prepay purse obligations. There's a, there's a lot of different ones that the councils have approved. IT funds, you could have separate parks and recreation maintenance funds. So these are all just ones that the city councils have decided to put money into, you know, just, just with different policy decisions. But they're, but they're unrestricted. So they're not, they're not, as Councilmember Rorba was indicating with like the impact fee funds, it's not any of that. It's unrestricted funds that they have designated themselves to save for a specific purpose or to mitigate a specific risk.
But they would be, I think the point is that they would still be available if, if, you know, things started, you know, trending downward and the city needed them. They're sitting there, it's only their own internal earmarking. So it's, it's, it's a source.
Yeah, so those are not including the program funds, though. Like what Marcus and other people.
No, no, no.
Mark Rakova and the.
No enterprise funds. No legally restricted funds.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. No, I think we had to, I know, I think we talked as a council last time. We got to revisit our financial way, how we are treating and where we are treating. Right now, it is only the risk is the only fund we are saving some money.
And the capital projects fund that we're going to speak about that has a, a small minimum.
Small, that's, that's what I'm showing this, all right? It's tiny money. Thank you.
And, and it's very indicative, you know, these other cities have extra revenue sources coming in through a, you know, some form of, some form of tax that allows them to be able to put some of these fundings away. Correct?
Well, and also Rancho Cordova is what, 20 years old this year, I think? West Sac and Elk Grove, those cities, they don't have the pension obligations that we do. They've only been around 25 years or less.
A lot of those cities, yeah, depend on contracting models and, yeah, don't have the same labor union.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so in addition to comparing to our neighbors, so we had in that last chart, we can also use a risk assessment template that the GFOA developed as part of that document of rethinking reserves. And so it can help us to determine an appropriate reserve range. This assessment was to evaluate our vulnerability in these areas here. So our vulnerability to extreme events, the level of revenue stability that we have, volatility of expenditures, dependency of other funds on the general fund to cover shortfalls, the rate of growth in the city and the city's ability to pay for services related to that growth, and the extent of unfunded infrastructure or capital needs within the city. The template also takes into consideration the size of the government, budgeting practices, borrowing capacity, and then it ultimately helps us to develop a risk score and then provide some analytical guidance of an appropriate range. So when staff went through this risk assessment, we determined that we didn't have an unusually high or an unusually low risk in most of these categories. However, in the dependency of other funds on the general fund to cover shortfalls and the extent of unfunded infrastructure and capital needs within the city, we do have a higher level of risk. Our dependency of other funds on the general fund is high because we don't have reserve funds in all of our funds. So if you had a, let's say, a streets project, but for some reason, gas tax was swept out from under us, those projects would not have another funding source. So the general fund would be the backup. And that's just an example. So we have a lot of funds that don't have a reserve to, to cover any shortfalls that they would have. And then the bottom one there, the extent of unfunded infrastructure and capital needs within the city, we've had a lot of conversations about that. That's, that's one of our highest risks, is that we do have quite a bit of deferred maintenance and infrastructure needs with no funding source. So with all those risk factors taken into consideration, the result of the risk assessment was a score of 20 out of 40 total points. So that puts the city in the low to moderate risk category. That was scores between 17 and 24. So we're right in the middle of that category. So for cities that end up in that category, the GFOA recommends that you look a little higher than their minimum of 17% and consider adopting a range of 17 to 25% of expenditures. They also recommend, as part of this, that you do an informal benchmarking study, which we did, and that's what I showed on that last chart. So after very careful analysis, going through the risk assessment, benchmarking with the peer agencies, staff recommends that the city council consider replacing our 15% reserve target with a reserve range. And based on that assessment, the range should be no less than the minimum of 17%. An appropriate ceiling, maybe 20% of expenditures. You could go as high as the recommended 25% of expenditures. We suggested the 20% because that's where the city has been for the last eight years. So it's kind of consistent with the, the current practice. And then if the range, if a range is the city council's desire, then any range that are accumulated, any reserves accumulated above that range would then be transferred to the capital projects fund per our current policy. So that, that's my last slide here. What we're asking is council direction on these four points. Will you consider replacing the 15% reserve with a range? What, what would the range be? And can you reaffirm that you would still like anything above the ceiling to be transferred to the capital projects funds on an annual basis, if there is any?
Any questions or comments?
So I have a question. So Stacy, back in, prior to the recession, when the reserves were hovering above 25%, even then, it, it sounds like the city was not putting any sort of regular, meaningful contributions in that capital fund. Is that correct?
Before the Great Recession, it was about a million dollars a year. I think that's what I had on my notes. Before the Great Recession, yeah, we had an average of 1 million, $25,000 going in in each of the years that I can see, my accounting records go back to 2023, I mean, 20, 2003. So that's as far back as I can see, but it was about a million dollars a year at that time.
Okay. Well, I am very much in favor of moving to a range because I, there is a minimum, but I also think there is a maximum. Where, okay, this is the taxpayers' money, it needs to be reinvested in the city, and I'm comfortable with 17 to 20%.
Question, I'm, even if we establish a range, it's still, it's guidance to the council and future councils and staff, right? It's not like we can't change it again, right?
Yeah, you could have another presentation like this.
Looking over shit at all of you guys. I, I share council person, Aquino's opinion. I think a range would make sense, and 17 to 25 seems appropriate. 17 to 25 seems appropriate, so we almost agree.
Councilmember Rorba, any comments?
What are the other ones, right? You know, that's where I am heading to because we only have 8 million dollars outside our comfort area. I know we're all going on 20th to Red Bus. That's a different thing to, to get, you know, a few more dollars. you know, a few more dollars. I'm okay with the, you know, proposed range here. It, it seems like right now you already mentioned whether the range is there or not, City of Folsom is already at the twenty percent give or take average for the last eighty years.
Correct.
Right?
Correct, yes.
So if, if technically speaking, if it is above fifteen percent, we should have moved to capital funds.
Technically, yes.
Technically. So we, at least, you know, this is my third year, we haven't done that because either not knowing or, or recommendations from you don't know. So how this is going to work, you know, that helps us as well. Right now we are already at the twenty percent.
Correct, because you have the risk management fund reserves, you know, still in the general fund.
Yes, and if we continue, again, you know, if, if south of fifty or property taxes, whatever it is, we are going to make, you know, a couple of more dollars, and this is going to go over twenty, now we are sealing it with the twenty. And we are going to move any of those million or two or three or four to somewhere capital. And that is not clear here, where that is going to go.
So right now the policy calls for anything over the excess to go to the capital fund. So we have one, it's one fund and it, it exists, we have it, it has about five million dollars in it, which is the minimum reserve called for by the policy, because it says that five percent of the value of your assets shall be held as in an emergency reserve for that infrastructure. So we have about five million dollars in there, so it's at the very minimum. But that's the fund that it would go into, per this current policy. If you wanted to add others, then that would be additional.
Yeah, that's why I was asking the question before, you know, when I see the, you know, other cities where they're about the same money-ish, you know, what we have percentageous wise, but they're, the other ones are fifty million, sixty million, like that, that's a huge number. So it is some creativity, there is some creativity, of course, first of all, we have to have the money to move there. So whether we get that in the next session somewhere, that's what I'm looking for. I'm, I'm comfortable with what we are agreeing, but where the excess money is going to go.
So you're asking for a separate item to come back and have a further discussion on possibilities of additional funds to set up for savings, like an IT capital fund or additional discretionary payments to CalPERS or just different options of.
Absolutely, that way you can educate us so that we can make the right call here. That's all I'm saying. That's why I was asking that fifty-plus million dollars, I'm going to quote Rancho Cordova here, fifty-six million dollars in other various funds, so they're loaded. And where and how, that's the, you know, education I needed personally, at least. Okay, otherwise, just to make that, we're already, Mike, if you are comfortable, I, we are still twenty percent is less in the region, almost. At the, we are at the floor, Rancho is the lowest, I, I rather want to increase that.
So Vice Mayor Chalamchala, you're saying seventeen to twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Okay.
Because, you know, I know we are all going to Red Bus, I know, I made that comment, Mike didn't, Mike, Mike didn't hear that, that's why I'm repeating.
If I may just make sure we understand what that event is, what is the Red Bus event? Because as you know, council members cannot advocate for a ballot measure. What is that event?
The, we were invited earlier tonight to an event at Red Bus by public, public comments.
And what is that event?
This was passed to the dius while we were talking.
I don't have a call, I'm sorry, sir. What is that event?
December twentieth, join us, Red Bus. Folsom takes action, that's the title.
If it's an event for or about the citizens initiative, the council may not advocate for that event.
Okay.
Because it is, it's a ballot measure they're trying to put under November twenty-twenty-four ballot.
Let me comment differently then. Please feel free to join me on Mondays for trivia at Red Bus, because I'm always there.
I have a question, Stacy. So what can the capital projects fund be used for and what are, so what are the restrictions and ability?
The restriction would be for long-term projects, infrastructure, equipment, vehicles, fire apparatus, potentially police building expansion, anything capital related. And, and with a one, absolutely, parks, yes.
All right. So my thoughts, I, I think if we were living high on the hog and had an excess of funds, I would be comfortable with seventeen to twenty-five, but considering the situation we're in, I would be comfortable with seventeen to twenty.
Agreed, and I think, I mean, we can be aspirational here, already going, we're, we're already, if we go seventeen to twenty, we're increasing our floor from fifteen to seventeen percent, that's a good thing. And, you know, down the road, maybe we can slowly increase from seventeen to twenty to seventeen to twenty-five, so, but.
So just, just for clarity, the only reason I suggested seventeen to twenty-five was that there may be an instance where we don't want to automatically transfer funds to the capital improvements reserve fund. And that's why I was just, the twenty-five gives us, we can always do that regardless of what the, the cap or the top end of this range is. I was just thinking that there could be an instance where there's a windfall, thinking optimistically, and we don't want to automatically throw those money into, all of it into capital. That's why I thought that the top end of the range could be higher, not as a necessity, but as a, you know, flexibility, that's all.
And also we're already twenty, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so.
And that's why I was asking that follow-on question, whether we move all this, any excess of twenty to the capital. So that's why I was, you know, help us.
Yeah. We don't find better landscapers.
I think we have two and two right now.
Over nothing.
No consensus yet.
Oh.
Where, yeah, so, so where are we on seventeen to twenty-five percent? How many on the council?
So, is this an action item? Would you like me to make a motion so we can focus this discussion, Mr. City Attorney?
Action item. It does call for direction to stay.
Okay. Then I'm going to move that we amend our current financial policy regarding our unassigned fund balance from fifteen percent to a range of seventeen to twenty percent.
That's same as the asking, right?
Is there a second?
Change it from fifteen to seventeen to twenty percent.
That's what staff is recommending, right?
Yes, that's my motion.
That's the motion.
Do you like to second it?
I'll second it, yeah. No, no, we'll say yes for sure. We need guidance where we go after twenty-one percent, that's all.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Chalamchala?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, and then did, or did we get direction to come back with another item to talk about where the excess will go? Or are you comfortable with the capital projects fund at this point?
Do we have an IT fund? Is that separate then from the, we don't have one, but we would like one.
We would like one.
So I, I think that's an appropriate discussion to have as a follow-up.
Follow-up?
What's a region, right? That's what, you're putting us in the region, you know, what region is doing, and I see that money is being loaded in the region, what is that, right? So that's what we want somehow.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening is item number eighteen, selection of mayor and vice mayor, and you do have one request to speak on this item.
Okay.
So your speaker request is from Scott Rafferty, come on down.
Six years ago, YK Chalamchala courageously stood for election, and of the non-Asian voters in this city, less than five percent of them ranked him in the top three choices. This is an outcome that shocked many of your constituents, enough so that they prepared a petition, which you declined to consider, to move to district elections. And he was the beneficiary of that because after that petition, when there was a presidential election, many of your constituents, including white crossover voters, looked very favorably on having a representative of the Asian community. So I hope in the course of the normal rotation that he serves as Folsom's first Asian-American mayor. But it's very melancholy because it is his last term, last year, on this council. Because the four non-Asian incumbents who served at the time violated state law to sequence the election of the Asian community in a gubernatorial election, when they knew that the Asian-American turnout was so low that the community wouldn't even be able to muster an opponent. So an incumbent was appointed in lieu of election. That's not right. Three minutes isn't enough to tell, for me to tell you from locally, the magic of district elections, how Folsom Cordova sent their kids back to school long before the other district that was fighting district elections, that had a secret deal with the school district because they weren't accountable to parents. You wouldn't be having the problems you're having here tonight about hate crimes, about, about trails, and if you were more well-informed about real neighborhoods, authentic neighborhoods, that's why you should let your constituents, under the guidance of the court, have districts that are authentic neighborhoods, not sat trappies, where the incumbents chose their constituents instead of the other way around. So that's what I would call on you, if you want to memorialize the historic contribution that YK made to this city, then adopt a map, respect the jurisdiction of the court to approve a map, because you didn't comply with the safe harbor, you knew that, your city attorney told me you had no intention to. Now, I'm not going away until that happens. And listen to the oral argument. The Ninth Circuit said, you've got your fees.
Just a second.
That's automatic, that's automatic. That's going to happen. But, because we're the catalyst, but we're getting our map too. The community, your constituents, they're getting a real map.
Scott, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we will move to the selection of mayor and vice mayor now, and usually we select mayor first. So I'm handing out ballots to the council members. The way we do it in Folsom is we have a ballot for the mayor and then we turn to a ballot for the vice mayor. The council members will fill their ballot out, pass it down to me, and then I'll read out the vote from each member, and the deputy clerk will tally the results.
Yeah. Can I say something before, or no, yes, mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. I know this is my last term, twenty-twenty-four, but I'm still working on with my wife to move, if I can successful, then probably I won't say that. She was, she was very firm in her statements. No, sorry, I know she's watching, she told me that she's going to watch, but be mindful what you're talking about, me there, you don't have permission. But anyways, though, you know, putting that one aside, I'm pretty passionate, right? And I'm so happy that I'm serving as a vice mayor, you know, I work with Rosario, and looking at the twenty-twenty, the Folsom voters verdict, they voted top votes for me. I'm the top vote getter in twenty-twenty, right? If it is a Rosewell, usually that person is in the line as per their code. But we choose here, that's true. And certainly, our, it's not that, you know, yes, I'm asking for a mayor support from my colleagues, because it's not just the mayor's support for a, a positional thing. I do have a state experience, twenty-seven years in government, twenty-seven years, and I can bring something to this city to make the financial situation where we are in right now. Yes, we might have heard from the community coming up, they are coming behind, you know, some tax initiatives, they are asking, you know, city and residents and all those, I'm hearing, because we must raise, you know, some revenues for the deficit. And not only that, how do we manage the money we are bringing to the table, taxpayers' money? Are we putting the enough controls? You might have heard me when I was talking in the previous agenda item, putting, you know, in a smart way, putting more checks and balances in spending, smart spending. And also, we pay federal taxes, this town, I'm going to make it fast, federal taxes, state taxes. We have to get our fair share from federal and state through the grants program, they do have it. We got to put, invest our time, that's where I was going to bring that value. And other one is public-private partnership. You know, I was meeting with our city manager, talking about it, how else besides taxes, we can bring the money to our city? And not only that, our city facilities, we do have quite a few city facilities. If you go today to Folsom Jew Sanctuary, sold out every night, ten dollars per ticket. So they make the highest revenue in this four weeks to six weeks. Can we be creative throughout the other year seasons to bring more revenue from our city facilities? Things like those, these are the things I have in my mind. And it's not I'm saying what Mr., you know, the previous Scott was saying. And also, this is the opportunity for my colleagues to show the diversity, the growth in this town. If, I'm not going to quote this, but I heard through the great point, I'm going to say this, south of fifty, plan area, almost forty to forty-five percent are the minority and Asian community. Right now I am on a perfect seat as a vice mayor, become the mayor, from that growing minority community, so that Folsom can showcase that, yes, Folsom is open, and it is putting that mayor, because the growth is happening. And we, probably my colleagues may have, or people may have some concerns, I'm running for another office, but I'm mindful. I usually do my day job before nine o'clock in the morning. After that, I am available for cities, citizens knows where YK is not there, YK is always there in the community. And also, I'm very mindful, I think Mr. Wong got a couple of times calls from me, Mr. Wong, I'm running for another office, I want to make sure I'm doing right thing as a council member and I'm saying right thing as a candidate. So he's my witness, I call him frequently for, so I'm mindful. So I don't want, you know, my next office is going to be a stopper for me becoming the mayor. This is the perfect opportunity for growing community of Folsom, the minorities, to put YK Chalamchala as a mayor of Folsom. My colleagues, please consider, thank you.
Well, you know, since you're commenting, YK, I, I got to comment too. This is probably the hardest part of the cities because, you know, we're all, we all run for office to get elected and to serve the best we can. And this year, having served as mayor, owning a business, and even looking at another office, the, the, as a mayor, really truly is almost like a full-time job. And you get pulled in so many directions and, you know, we're, we're all, we're all pleasers, we all want to be everywhere and represent the city that, that, that we live in and that we serve. But it definitely, being mayor, definitely challenged me in many ways this year, just with time and wanting to ensure that I met the duties of the obligation of mayor. So, you know, my support is going to be what truly is in the best interests of the city, and that always doesn't, you know, you may want something, but, but what you need is something so completely different, so just wanted to add on to your comments.
Thank you, mayor. I know I forgot one, you know, the tech sector, I have been talking, you know, now at least we started, and we want to bring the tech sector to Folsom. All the people from Bay Area or other states, we already have a strong base from Intel. I have that skill as well. Thank you again, let's go, I think I already voted.
I want to say something too. I think it should be noted that YK is actually everywhere. And I think it's interesting, the current mayor has a business, is running for another office, and was mayor, and was able to do it. I think that would apply to YK as well. I don't see why he would be any different than what, you know, what has happened this year. So, you know, I also think it's important to look at our community and how diverse it is. And here is our one opportunity to promote a vice mayor that has done nothing wrong as vice mayor and is everywhere, our community loves him, to do right by our diversity. I mean, we just had proclamation after proclamation about inclusion and diversity, and. I mean, we just had proclamation after proclamation about inclusion and diversity, and, you know, I think if YK had done something wrong or stepped out of step, it would be a different discussion, but that's, I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay. So Sarah Aquino votes for Mike Kozlowski for mayor. Rosario Rodriguez votes for Mike Kozlowski for mayor.
Mike, you vote for me.
YK Chalamchala votes for YK Chalamchala for mayor. Anna Rorba votes for YK Chalamchala, and Mike Kozlowski votes for Mike Kozlowski for mayor. So Mike Kozlowski will serve as mayor in 2024.
Congratulations, Mayor Kozlowski.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank all of you for trusting me with this responsibility, regardless of how you voted, and I want to say that there's, having served as mayor once before, it is a, it is a bit of a tall order, and the things that we have talked about over the last month or six weeks are important things that will progress regardless of whether it's YK or myself sitting in that chair. So I just want to assure everybody that we are committed to being a safe, diverse, happy family here in Folsom, so thank you very much.
Okay, I'll now hand out ballots for vice mayor. Take one and pass it down. So Rosario Rodriguez votes for Sarah Aquino for vice mayor. Mike Kozlowski votes for Sarah Aquino for vice mayor. Sarah Aquino votes for Sarah Aquino for vice mayor. YK Chalamchala votes for YK for vice mayor, and Anna Rorba votes for YK Chalamchala for vice mayor. So Sarah Aquino will serve as vice mayor for 2024.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Okay. With the conclusion of that item, if there's no more comments, then we will move on to council requests for future agenda items.
I have one. I would like to bring back a discussion of a few individuals throughout our community who have just made a significant imprint in the quality of life that we have here in Folsom. There are three people that stand out that I would like to consider for the years, and I'm talking almost 30-plus years of contribution. Carrie Howell, who was a former city council member. Joe Galliardi, who is on his 29th year serving the city of Folsom. And Will Kempton, who has also given immense amount of contribution to the city, and just finding ways of how we can honor them for their years of service to our city. And if there's anyone else that maybe we can consider, but hoping we can find something that would just recognize them for their work and their service.
Mine is one that's already, I've talked about since, well, the whole year, but also since October 10th, since our council was completely filled with people from our city that were concerned about their safety. I, you know, I can be as patient as I need to be, but there was consensus to get an action item on the agenda to discuss the resources we need for our police department in order to combat the crime that is increasing and documented increasing, and that our residents continue to feel in their homes, out on the streets and out on the trails. So I would like it to be the first meeting in January. I did want it to be by the end of the year, amongst other things. The reason I didn't vote for that other thing to be continued is because, you know, that's gonna get, that means the action item, the actual item that we need to take action on is gonna continue to get pushed. So I expect it to be, obviously, Kozlowski, you will be our next mayor. You know how important this is, you've heard it as well, so I'll keep asking, but there was consensus to get this on the agenda, so I hope it becomes at the first of the year.
Okay. Any other item?
I know, Mark, this is Elaine. It's about the, the restriping of Iron Point and East Bidwell, the busiest intersection of the town. I know it has been working on, but not sure where we are. I know, we thought, I think last September or October, Josh Jag gave an update, and don't know where we are. So that's one. And the other one is also, I think I mentioned to you, Elaine, on the Folsom Auburn Road, the speeding, it's 55 miles. I think in this year, if I'm not wrong, Chief Philman, we can talk, six or seven casualties, two innocent kids, the accidents crash on Folsom Auburn Road. So we, we would like to bring, you know, any of those topics to the city council, either as a workshop item or what we can do on that, especially that traffic and safety and these pending projects. Any help we need, you know, Mike is very well established on the Secog side, whether we need a Caltrans push, a button to approve on the intersection restriping, that's the, that's what I want.
It might, it might take a little time to pull it together, so if, but I would expand that to potentially doing it as a traffic safety workshop, maybe not as voluminous as the one we did on the crossing and East Nataoma, but that is one of our major, you know, passageways through the city, and people do, well, with all the barrels out there right now, there's less speeding in that part of the city, but yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be bad to have a, just kind of piece-by-piece description of what the potential improvements could be to that road through Folsom. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Yep. Okay.
Okay. All right, good. Well, the clerk, please call the next item.
Yeah, that'll take us to scene manager reports.
Okay, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Rodriguez for serving admirably as our mayor over the last year, and thank you to Councilmember Chalamchala for serving as our vice mayor, and congratulations to Mayor Kozlowski, and congratulations to Vice Mayor Aquino. Last week, I was happy to join other city of Folsom representatives with UC Davis Health as they celebrated a key milestone in the construction of their Folsom Medical Office Building, a new outpatient facility being built at Highway 50 and East Bidwell, near Folsom Ranch. At the event, crews used a crane to lift the final beam of steel into place that we all signed, in what's called a topping-out ceremony. At 112,000 square feet, the three-story facility will include primary and specialty care, a lab for blood draws, ophthalmology services, and an optical shop. It will also include imaging services and infusion suite, offering treatment for cancer patients and others. It's the first of several projects planned for the 34-acre site, all part of what will be called the Folsom Center for Health. The Folsom Police and Fire Departments are teaming up with Santa Claus to visit Folsom neighborhoods through December 16th. A fleet of emergency vehicles, along with firefighters, police officers, and city officials, is escorting Santa Claus through neighborhoods. Santa's elves will collect non-perishable canned goods to help stock the Twin Lakes Food Bank for the holidays, as well as unwrap toys for the holiday toy drive, and you can find Santa's schedule and information at folsomsantatracker.com/routes. Saturday, January 6th, is the city's annual Christmas tree recycling event at Rodeo Park, 200 Stafford Street, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Please bring lights that are free of all lights and decorations. Please note, Rodeo Park will be closed to pedestrians and cyclists during the event, and you can find out more by emailing recycle@folsom.ca.us. And finally, congratulations to the Folsom Bulldogs for taking home the CIF State Football Championship. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Aquino?
Yes, I would like to begin by thanking Mayor Rodriguez and Vice Mayor Chalamchala for your service this past year. I especially appreciate that you both were so visible and so accessible in the community. I know our residents appreciated that, and I certainly did too. And I do just want to respond to Vice Mayor Chalamchala. You are a fantastic ambassador for Folsom, and there is no question about that. I supported Councilmember Kozlowski to be mayor this coming year, really for two reasons. Number one, he has been consistently the lead on this council when it comes to discussions about sales tax measures. And despite what the residents may be doing on their own, we have an agenda item coming back in January where we may adopt our own sales tax measure for the ballot, and so I think it's appropriate that he lead that effort. Secondly, I do think there is a little bit of a problem, conflict of interest of having folks serve in the mayor and the vice mayor role when they're running for higher office, just because, as mindful as you may be, it does blur the lines a little bit of when are you representing the city and when are you campaigning? And Mayor Rodriguez, when we all, I think it was unanimously, voted her as mayor last year, she was not running for supervisor. There was no indication that she would be running for supervisor, because we all thought Supervisor Frost was running for reelection. So anyway, I will say, in my now five years on the council, I have served as mayor, vice mayor, and a regular little council member, and I don't feel like I have any less of an influence when I am not the mayor or the vice mayor, and I know it will be the same for all of us. So anyway, that's that. I got back yesterday from Dubai, spent 10 days there with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District at COP28, which is the United Nations Climate Change Conference. If you can imagine any conference that you've been to for the U.S. Conference of Mayors or the League of California Cities or whatever, and multiply it by like 100, that's probably what the experience was. So I tried my best to attend workshops and panels and sessions and all that kind of stuff for things that I thought would be relevant for us back here in this region. So a lot of panels and sessions on hydrogen, which has been a particular topic of focus for the air district the last couple of years, and also education, because I do think California being the leader and the nation of, you know, trying to phase out fossil fuels and all that kind of stuff, there is great demand for jobs in the green technology sector, and so the extent that we can work with Folsom Cordova and other districts in the region to try to create those pathways through career technical education, that would, I think, be a good thing. So got to do a little bit of touristy stuff on my dime, and also just to reiterate, the city of Folsom did not pay one cent for this trip. Dubai is an amazing city. I can confidently say their, their MO seems to be more is more. If they can build it faster, bigger, taller, better, they absolutely will, but it is a very safe city. Tipping is not expected, which I gotta tell you is kind of a nice change from what we're used to here in the United States. And 80% of the residents who live in Dubai are expats, so it's very interesting to talk from, you know, cab drivers or whatever, to Uber drivers, whatever, you know, where are you from? How long have you been here? So anyway, really, really a great experience. So thank you to the air district for that opportunity.
That's awesome.
Awesome.
Councilmember Rorba?
Yeah, congratulations, Mayor Kozlowski and Vice Mayor Aquino. I do, it's been an interesting year, but I'm very grateful still to be serving Folsom and the residents. One thing I've learned is if you do the right thing, they'll come out and support you, and I very much felt that throughout this entire year, but especially in the last several months. So I do want to thank the residents that voted for me in District 5, but also far and beyond too. I get emails and calls and texts all the time, and I'm very, very grateful for that. But as we go into the holiday season, I celebrate Christmas, so I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, but also Happy Holidays to everyone and however they celebrate their holiday seasons, and I hope, I hope everyone gets to spend time with their loved ones, because nothing matters more than that. So thank you for a good year.
All right. Vice Mayor Chalamchala?
Yes. Mayor, I know, it's a lot of work as a mayor. You did it, and you led this team, and you represented city. I know you were in so many, so many events, I know. I shows up once in a while to most of them. It's a commitment. It is a sincere commitment, and from bottom of my heart, thank you for serving us.
Thank you.
And Mayor Kozlowski and Vice Mayor Aquino, we're looking forward to working with you, and congratulations to both of you. And another big congratulations to our Folsom Bulldogs. I was there on Friday morning when the buses were leaving, and thanks to our police and fire, giving them a nice escort to the Highway 50, they got the medals, they got the, you know, pride to Folsom. If Folsom is listening, you know, please, you know, pass them a big congratulations to Folsom Bulldogs. And also, this is the holiday season, starting from November to the Veterans Day, our Parks and Rec Team. Now, so much work is going on on our Jew Sanctuary. If you haven't visited the zoo, please visit Folsom. I'm again asking. It's beautiful. It's a holiday festival. It's not, even though Santa is here, it is a holiday festival. And Folsom Police Officers Association and Fire Department, CAPS, CERT, they are all working to bring this holiday season more bright and colorful and festive to our town. If you see any of those hard-working staff until 10:00 p.m., thank them, please. Stop by and thank them. They are working until 10:00 p.m., majority of the staff members. So again, what else is there? I know we are getting quite a few Pleaserville and Sacramento emails. Don't know where that, you know, you guys are hearing that, at least personally, I'm not supporting. We want our local train, Steam Express, running on the local here, and we want to add that to our festivity, our pride, our nature, you know, the, Folsom is the second train track city in the state. So we want that. If, I know, we got, I think we all might have got that. We have, I have 53 or 54 emails from the people. So no, I am personally in support of that one as a council member, and, you know, we will work hard, and I want to run that steam engine before I step down from the city council. With that, Folsom, thank you, and happy holidays.
All right. So I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve. Oh, I'm, oh, my goodness.
May I?
I can't believe I skipped you.
I have actual business to talk about.
Gosh.
So we, we had, that's okay. We had Southeast Connector, JPA meeting on Friday, Secog yesterday, and RT yesterday, so I was busy representing city on all, on each of those. The Southeast Connector, JPA has recently issued the contract for sections of the connector to be designed that primarily run through Rancho Cordova, but are an important connection and the linkage between the parts of the connector project that have been built in Folsom and Elk Grove. So that's about to get underway, the design part of it. Construction TBD, because it needs an enormous amount of money. At Regional Transit, we had continuing discussions about a light rail station being added in Del Paso area, near downtown. The Regional Transit, for those of you that don't know, Folsom joined Regional Transit, and they absorbed our private transit system or local transit system into RT. So we have a board seat there, and there is a neighborhood, kind of if you're familiar, in the vicinity of where Lowe's and Fishes is downtown, that is under, that is in the middle of a transformation, and there's a lot of new housing being built there, and for years, there's been a light rail station planned in that area. It unfortunately, much like our parks maintenance contract, when the price came in for what that light rail station was going to cost, it was something like 100% more than what was budgeted originally. And in that instance, that's a gap of funding of more than $20 million. So a bunch of creative people have been working to get that to happen in spite of the fact that there isn't money for it right this minute. So more news on that, but if you're interested in our light rail system, that's ongoing at RT. Secog, we had our, we had a meeting and spent the majority of the time talking about the formation of another joint powers authority that is for a very specific purpose. The, the causeway part of Highway 80, and the part of Highway 80 that continues from the causeway west through Davis, entirely within Yolo County, is going to transition to managed lanes. And if you're familiar with driving around the Bay Area or Southern California, there are managed lanes where there's a tolling charge sometimes of the day for them, and, you know, high-capacity vehicles or buses and things like that don't have to pay. It's, it's a way of getting additional throughput on the freeway without doing extraordinary construction to add lanes. So anyway, that project is coming down the road, but because tolls will be collected, there needs to be a joint powers authority to collect those tolls and distribute. there needs to be a joint powers authority to collect those tolls and distribute those funds. So if you're familiar, and I can't imagine why you would be, in Sacramento County, for instance, there's a joint powers authority that's called STA, which all of the, all of Sacramento County and the communities in Sac County are part of, that distributes Measure A funding. Okay, this is going to work similarly. The tolls that are collected will be specifically for the operation and maintenance of the toll road. And then if there's any excess funds, that joint powers authority would be able to distribute them for other projects that aid with reducing congestion in that corridor. So it's very specific in its use, but that was, that's important if you're a roads nerd. I got the great honor of going out with a whole bunch of kids from Vista del Lago and volunteering at Aid Station 3B on the marathon course last Sunday. And what great fun. And the best thing about it is one of the kids that was volunteering is a, is a really nice high schooler named Xavier Bewat. And his dad came blasting by us like in fourth place in the marathon when he got to Aid Station 3B. So it was pretty cool to see Shadrack come cruising by. And news flash, we have a world-class marathoner that lives in Folsom, so, and his kids go to Vista. And then it's been an extraordinary week for the Bulldog Nation because not only did the football team from Folsom High School win a fourth state championship now?
Fifth.
Fifth state championship. The guys that contributed to a couple back in 2017, Jonah Williams and Jake Browning are starting for the NFL Cincinnati Bengals and won their game this past week. So great, great time to be a Folsom High grad. And for those guys that won the championship this year, we're expecting big things from you in the future. And then I would like to add my gratitude to both of, both of you, YK and Rosario, for doing an exemplary job, serving the city on the council generally and specifically as mayor and vice mayor. You guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Rodriguez, can I make one more announcement?
Yes, yes. I wanted to say that the school district joint meeting is, has been postponed to January 29th at six, at the, at six, I think at six, at the school district building. So I know that there was a lot of people last week or two weeks ago interested in that. But I do want to say one thing because Jake Browning did play at the University of Washington and the University of Washington went 12-0 undefeated. The last time they did that, I was there, which is a long time ago. But just wanted to put in my little alma mater. There was a connection. Thank you, Mike.
Well, you and I may get to play a ballgame because I went to the University of Texas and they're doing great, so.
Mayor Kozlowski, I also wanted to add that I run with Shadrack every morning.
For the first like 20 seconds?
Yeah, yeah. He like loops me, laps me over and over again at 5:00 in the morning. So we've gotten to know each other.
That's great.
It's funny. It feels like I've been on accelerated mode tonight. Okay, so yeah, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to serve as mayor. I have truly, really enjoyed it and just having people come to the office and meeting with people and, Mike, I'm not sure, if you don't want your keys for the office, I'll be more than happy to use it for a few more months. But it is a great place to actually meet with people. I used to meet people with coffee shops. Now, having an office where you can actually sit down has been, God, it's so nice. So, but yeah, it was definitely an amazing experience. It definitely gave me the ability to be able to run a meeting here and maybe serve at a different capacity on one of the boards that I serve. But I got to tell you, it was a year ago, this is, I'm letting you in on some information. We had our first meeting and it was just days before that I was telling Krista, I don't know how to run a meeting and I need a crash course because this is not going to be good. And so we sat down and we went through the, what the meeting would go, what it would be like. So Krista, thank you so much for, this past year, there were so many meetings where I was like, all right, so what do we do? All right, so what's the next step? Okay, tell me. And so you're a great teacher, Jen, when you stepped in, you did a remarkable job. And so thank you for just your patience and your education on serving as mayor. Elaine, I have really enjoyed working with you this past year and very closely, just on so many, just so many things that we had discussed and we had a weekly meeting and it was great. And, you know, I'm just going to share a little bit about one of your, one of the action items that came out of your annual review this year was at 360. And there are some descriptions of you that your executive staff described you as, and I just want to share a little with that with the public. It was ethical leadership, hard work, trustworthy, responsive, knowledgeable, empathetic, intelligent, reliable, role model, patient, selfless and engaged. And she's a great boss. And so this past year, working really closely with you, I can, I concur. You are, you are, you are an asset to the city. And while nobody is ever perfect, you have a heart for the city. And so there was one thing I wanted to add, and that was just your exceptional and remarkable customer service. Like you really come from, I know you, you come from a nice place. Sometimes that's a gift that not everybody has. And so your ability to just deliver exceptional customer service is appreciated from someone that me who's on the council and looks at our leadership and says, you know what, they do a really good job and they really care and they try and they try to deliver just a high level of service to the complaints that we get and the issues that come before us. And so I just want to thank you. I also want to give a shout out to Sienna, who is out there every night from now until Saturday. It's always neat to see kids' faces and just the energy that it gives the city. I want to congratulate the Bulldogs on their championship. And just a little, just a little feedback on the mayor and vice mayor thing for Benny, YK and I, I mean, I do, it's kind of neat that we're both looking at potentially growing and taking offices in other areas, which really does open up these spots for other people to serve the City of Folsom. I come from the belief also, Sarah, that when you are running for another office, oftentimes it can be, you know, it can interfere with your ability. I've been doing this for the past four months. You'll never, ever hear me say I'm tired, but I got to tell you, I'm exhausted and I'm so happy to give my business back a lot more time because I feel like I have neglected it. There are, I've come to the point where I just ask for forgiveness instead of permission because there are so many things I've got to roll and, and I want what is best for the City of Folsom this next year is going to be probably one of the most precarious years that, that I can foresee, being either sitting out in the chambers or being up here. We need definitely lead a leadership that is going to be hyper-focused on the long-term success of the city. We have a lot of issues. We have a pretty serious structural deficit coming down the pike. We're going to experience that this next summer and we need people who are just going to be, as I said, hyper-focused on ensuring that we can do the best we can for the City of Folsom. So congratulations to you two. And, you know, I, I kind of felt bad for Mike a couple of years ago when one of the big deals for us as mayors is to be able to deliver a state of the city and he had to do it on Zoom. And I always kind of felt bad for him because the energy of being in a room and being able to deliver, you know, your, your vision and just great things that the city has done the past year is really a highlight and it just drives that energy forward. And then the last thing is I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays and we'll see you in 2024. And with that, we will close today's meeting at 8:48.